Struggling?
I'm going to call this meeting to order. I'm going to ask Pastor Zach Strong of Christ Church of the Heartland if he'll come and lead us on invocation. Thank you, Zach.
Good evening. Let us pray, all right? Father, thank you for your goodness and grace, and thank you for this incredible day that you've given us. Thank you, Father, for our great city, and thank you for the mayor and the council and the great leadership, Lord, that you've given to this, to this community, to lead us, Father, that our lives are blessed, that we live peaceably, and that, Father God, we are strong. And, Father, we know that in challenging times, in dark times, in rough times, God, leadership has caught on to its greatest moment. It has to shine the brightest. So I pray in these days, in the days that are ahead, as our cities are facing challenges, God, we've never faced, I ask God for your wisdom, and I ask you to strengthen them, and I ask you to fill them with grace beyond measure, and for the challenges, God, that stand, that they'll operate through your wisdom and for the greatest benefit of all. God, we just give you praise for your goodness and grace, and speak peace and safety, God, over our community, in Jesus' name. Amen.
We have three presentations this evening, and I'm going to come down front to do that.
Mayor, which order are you going in? Your first.
The first is our beautiful property of the month, and it is MRV Banks. And no, he had nothing to do with this. But it is beautiful landscaping. If you've not driven by there on Mount Auburn Road and Kings Highway, it's, they've done a beautiful job, and I know you don't do any of it, but whoever does does a great job. So, good job.
Thank you to the Keep Cape Beautiful group. I was thinking about this right before. The first organization I got involved with when I graduated college and I joined the Chamber of Commerce was the Chambers Beautification Committee. So this, very special to me, and I'm going to make sure I take a picture of it and send it to Tim Arbiter. He'll get a kick out of it. So, thank you to Keep Cape Beautiful.
The second is a proclamation for Parks and Recreation Month. Whereas parks and recreation programs are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including the Cape Girardeau, Missouri, and whereas our parks and recreation programs are virtually, are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in the city of Cape Girardeau, ensuring the health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of the community and the region. And whereas parks and recreation programs build healthy, active communities that aid in the prevention of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreation services for those who are mentally or physically disabled, and also improve mental and emotional health of all citizens. And whereas parks and recreation programs increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction. And whereas parks and recreation and areas are fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community. And whereas parks and natural resources improve water quality, protect groundwater, prevent flooding, improve the quality of air we breathe, provide vegetative buffers to development, and produce habitat for wildlife. And whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for our children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. Whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month, and whereas the City of Cape Girardeau recognizes the benefits of parks and recreation derived from our rivers, parks, trails, and recreation resources, now therefore be it resolved that I, Bob Fox, Mayor of the City of Cape Girardeau, do hereby proclaim July 2020 as Parks and Recreation Month. Do you?
Very unusual month for us to be celebrating parks and recreation because, of course, we are in the people business, and so it does make it a bit challenging as we've had to modify a lot of our programs, activities, and facilities. But we are carrying on to the best of our ability. We think that parks and recreation provides that bright spot for everybody, so we hope to see you in the parks and enjoying our activities this summer. Thank you.
Thank you. We now have a emergency, emergency solutions grant presentation. Steve, you're going to do that?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I am Stephen S. Williams. I am the Housing Assistance Coordinator for the City of Cape Girardeau, and one of the grants that we administer, along with the County Commission and the City of Jackson, is the Emergency Solutions Program, or the Homeless Program. Last year, we received money from the program in the amount of, the Salvation Army received $7,000. The Safe House for Women received $40,741.20. Catholic Charities of Southern Missouri received $46,400 for the homeless prevention, and the Community Carrying Council received $46,400 for rapid rehousing, and the administration was $3,800. That made a total of $144,356.20. The requirement of this program is to match those dollars coming from the government with 100% match. So when you match those dollars, dollar for dollar, you have a total amount coming into the county last year, last year's program of $288,714.40. The program that we have been approved for, for the year 2020, the Salvation Army received $7,000. The Safe House for Women received $40,937.20. Catholic Charities of Southern Missouri, they received $46,400. And the Community Partnership of Southeast Missouri, the new name for the Community Carrying Council, for rapid rehousing, they received $46,400. And the county, the City of Jackson, and the County Commission split up the administrative cost of $3,800. That made a total grant of $144,537.20. And you, when you match that dollar for dollar, the total amount this year in this program will be $289,074.40. The programs that we administer, the reason they are successful is because of the fine sub-grantees that we have in our program. We get a chance to come to you about once a year, and then we fade in the background and do what the program requires us to do. There's a lot of confidentiality and a lot of different things that we can't share with the public, but your work is being done through these particular sub-grantees. They are going to come to you, and they'll make their presentation and tell you what they have done and what they intend to do. Starting with Safe House, Community Carrying Council, and the partnership.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Jessica Hill. I'm the Executive Director of the Safe House for Women. As Steve mentioned, this year's grant, we received just under $41,000, very similar to last year's grant. For us, the Emergency Solutions Program helps pay for the operational costs of our shelter. We just marked the one-year anniversary of moving into our new, larger shelter on June 26th, so we're very excited to have wrapped up the first full year there. We did serve many more clients than we were able to in the past. We really did prove to ourselves that the new shelter was a great need in our community, and we were very happy to be able to assist so many more people with residential shelter. We also closed on the sale of our old shelter on June 29th, so we're excited about that as well. It's just a couple houses down the street here from where we are right now, and a young family bought it, and they're going to convert it back into a single-family residence, which we're really excited about for the neighborhood and the community. So, for us, ESG will continue to pay for things like security monitoring, food, utilities, maintenance, equipment and furnishings, transportation, language translation, and hotel placements. We have been doing a lot of hotel placements recently because of coronavirus, and Kim Dixon, our Shelter Director, is going to talk more about our COVID response.
Good evening. As she said, my name is Kim Dixon. I'm Shelter Director. So we've requested an additional $10,000 from our Emergency Solutions Grant funding to help us to pay for hotel placements. Due to the coronavirus, we're placing all of our clients that reach out for shelter in hotels for up to two weeks and then transitioning into our facility to hopefully prevent that from ever happening in our shelter. So, obviously, that's quite a financial burden on us. Since we've been impacted with this in March, we've spent, or we have placed about 350 nights, we paid for 350 nights in the hotel, so you can imagine the cost of that. So, yes, we'll continue to do the work and help victims, you know, as much as we can, of course, so we're still there, just a different way.
Yep. We also wanted to say really quick that, as one of the sub-grantees of the city, that Steve Williams has been an invaluable resource for us over the course of the last 20-plus years to the Safe House, and we really, really appreciate his work on behalf of the city. So, thank you, Steve.
My name is Angela Webb, and I am the Housing Supervisor with Catholic Charities of Southern Missouri. We received $46,400 to help families that are being evicted maintain their homes and keep their utilities on. Our focus this funding year has been providing more quality, intensive services to families. Regina Moore is a case manager for Cape, the Cape area, and she's been working with families to provide case management services to help them find jobs and maintain self-sufficiency as they move forward to try to, as they leave our program. That also includes things like budgeting, helping them find resources, maybe they need to apply for Social Security disability because they can't work, whatever that might be. Regina is the one that's going to walk them through that process. We've been able to maintain these services throughout the COVID-19 crisis this year. We've continued to meet face-to-face with our clients through a variety of creative measures and make sure that everyone's taken care of. And moving into the next funding year, we're going to continue to work with these families and help them find self-sufficiency for themselves. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jalisa Jones. I'm with the Community Partnership, formerly known as Community Carrying Council, under the direction of Melissa Stickel, the Executive Director, and Kevin Garner, the Director of Housing. We, under the ESG grant, we service individuals that are literally homeless, that's under rapid rehousing. Literally homeless is transitional shelters, places not meant for human habitation or institutional settings less than 90 days. Currently, this grant year, we have serviced eight total households, currently servicing six. As Steve mentioned, we were granted $46,400. During the COVID-19 health crisis, we have been able to maintain contact with clients, still servicing through rental assistance. We also help with applications and things of that nature, community case management and such. Soon, we hope to be in our centralized location over on Sprig, and so things are going great, and we hope to continue.
The Salvation Army is not with us today, but mainly, the Salvation Army provided bus tickets to take individuals from here to a safe place to live in. Before they do that, they, they verify that they're going to this place, and people will accept them, and that's how they do their program. As of June the 17th, 2020, the Emergency Solutions Program has changed. The city and the county will be no longer administering the program. The way they have set it up, you can only get $50,000 per sub-grantee, so the city could get $50,000, the county could get $50,000. So, the maximum amount that we could get would be $100,000. Each one of the sub-grantees can apply for this money and will apply for this money. They can get up to $50,000 per sub-grantee, which includes administration. They will be doing the same program with you and with the county. The only difference is, the city and the county, and the City of Jackson, won't be sponsoring it anymore. We've been doing this program for approximately 26, 27 years. It's been a very successful program, and you see why your program has been successful. And if you have any questions, we'll be glad to answer them for you.
Questions, Steve?
Thank you very much.
Appreciate all you do. Communications and reports. Counsel, anybody?
I just want to thank all of the members of the Parks and Recreation staff for everything that they've been doing in light of COVID-19 with Cape Splash and the Fourth of July fireworks cancellation at the last minute. You guys are doing good work. It's a lot of work, but thank you for doing it and putting in that time.
I second that. That's, they're doing a fantastic job. They really are. With all the, all the things going on around with Cape Splash and the Sportsplex and everything else, you're, you're doing a great job. We appreciate it. Anybody else? Nope. Scott?
Thank you, Mayor. I was just going to mention kind of the same thing. I don't know if everybody knew, but I was on vacation the last two weeks, and of course, it's been a, a busy time for the city. And so I really wanted to recognize our Deputy City Manager, Molly Maynor, for the great work she has done during my absence in navigating through these. She's done an excellent job of that, as well as all the support staff. You mentioned Parks and Rec, but it's really been, every department has had its challenges with COVID, with just extra burden, plus we're coming out of, you know, 15 weeks of COVID already and everything else. So, thank you for mentioning that, council members, and I just want to echo that, and also to recognize Molly and staff for stepping in the last two weeks.
All right. Thank you, thank you. I, I'm going to put a plug in for Pastor Ben Porter and Gateway Church. They're doing a series on race, race relations in America, in conservative America, and it's, they had the first session last Thursday. They're going to do it the next three Thursdays. They had a panel of white area pastors this last week and had some questions that they answered. It's, this next week, I think it's a group of black pastors. Is that not right, Reverend Bird? And the third week, it will be a panel of elected officials and law enforcement, I think, myself, Chief Blair, maybe the Sheriff, and Mark Walker, the Prosecutor, not sure who else is on there. And then the last week will be a combination of those. But it is a, I was a little discouraged that there weren't more people there, I think, with, with everything that's going on in our country right now. But it is a very open discussion of a serious issue, and if you cannot be there, I think it's on Facebook Live and also on YouTube, so I don't know what the viewership was for that. Haven't been told, but it is, it's a unique thing happening in our community, and I would encourage you, if you can't be there, to watch it, and you'll, you'll know what's going on. It's at Gateway Church, in the old federal building. It's at 7:00 the next three Thursdays.
Nicolette, can we post a link to the last one and then to each subsequent one on our website, so you can go directly to cape.org, and then we'll try to put a link up front so that you can view the ones that's already happened, and in case you cannot make it, you can do it safely that way as well.
Okay. Anybody else? All right, I have it for discussion. We're going to have a council discussion on the issue of the monument first, just to hear from different council members on if they've got anything to say. And we're going to try to do this systematically if we can. I, we've got it on the agenda as appearances regarding the monument issue, and individuals who wants to make comments must first be recognized, and then each speaker is allowed two minutes, and the timer will sound at the end of that time. We're going to lead off with Sophia Boss, who is spearheaded one petition, and then Erin Jones is going to do the other one. So, first of all, we'll have any, does anybody have anything they want to bring up or discuss? About what's happened so far and anything that's been proposed?
I'll start. So, obviously, counsel, we've had some discussions going back and forth about what to do, what, you know, and so originally, originally I was, I had emailed you all and said, you know, what if we did something where it stayed, but we came up with a compromise that for Cape Girardeau to actually be a leader in this, different than anywhere we've seen, where we could take the groups of the, just leave it, and the people that, that just want it down, and we could bring them together to do something bigger at Ivor Square. Something that was all-inclusive to all, to all veterans and really celebrated all veterans, and not just what we currently have, and really, and use that, that moment in time of bringing two groups together as, as something that was historical in itself, because, you know, I, I believe that Cape Girardeau is unique. I, I believe that if any community could, could do that and bring two groups, that Cape Girardeau could. We could even, I, I kept personally, I looked at it and said, there were 650 veterans that died in the Civil War, over 2% of the population at that time. Now, obviously, none of us support what the cause that the Confederates fought for. That monument, and those monuments do represent veterans. Now, we had discussions internally at council, and I had somebody that I respect a lot say, well, Robbie, that's really not a compromise because it stays there. And, and I was made aware of a recommendation to put it at the Kellerman, or at the, sorry, at the Lorimer Cemetery. And I, I thought that that could be a great compromise, and, and what I internally did was I said, you know, part of our problem in society right now is that we have forgot what compromise looks like. We have the takedown, we have the keep, we have the far left, we have the far right, and nobody wants to get into this middle ground. It's my opinion, just one of, one of many. I talked to a bunch of residents who were opposed to taking it down, and taking it down, and they seemed to bridge the gap with many that even had originally wanted to have it taken down in general. In my mind, it really, at Lorimer, was, was the best thing other than created a veterans' plaza at Ivor Square. Just me, you know? But my sole idea in being at Lorimer was to offer a compromise and have a direct outcome of a location monument with not dragging things out longer and longer and longer. And so that's, that's, that's where I'm at. I've told a few of you that, that, that I was, that that's, that's, after a lot of time, I've not, this is not an easy conversation. This isn't easy for any of us. With that being said, I knew it was bound to happen, and, and here we are. So, that's where I'm at, and I'd open it up to the rest of you.
Well, I would like to say, I don't think that it's so much a statue as the, what the statue represents, okay? No, well, I'm not going to say nobody, but most of your Caucasians would not feel the way the African-Americans feel because it was our forefathers that was, they was fighting about so they can keep slaves. So, it doesn't, to me, it doesn't benefit the citizens here now. You talking about 60-some years ago, and we still weren't doing good. So now, every day when we pass by there, we got to see this statue that says, yes, our, our fathers fought and killed your people. And it's not a, it's not a good taste, but it's facts, and you can't run from facts. You can't even fix it because it's already making a statement. The Confederate soldiers, they were so, you know, I mean, well, they split the United States, and we had two of those, and then they, a lot of them died, but they reunited with the United States, but they still want to keep the old ways. You can't do it like that. You have to say, look, at the time when you guys was running the show, you was running the show, but now it's a new day, and we got babies coming up that don't even, don't even understand the history of the United States, let's only the statue. You know, so I'm thinking that, look, when I read that article, they out of the newspaper, and it said that you would go to the funeral, I mean, not funeral home, but to the cemetery, I was in favor, because I'm not saying destroy it, but I'm saying, let's not put it right in the faces of those that was wounded.
And ivory.
Right. Okay.
Is it our turn?
She said, turn your mic.
Okay, say what I said.
Okay, say what I said. I was saying, huh? Okay then. Okay then.
Anybody else? Stacy?
Well, I just wanted to let everyone know, the council has received hundreds of emails and communications, phone calls on this issue. It's, we've known nationally, it's a big subject that's being discussed, but even here in Cape Gerardo. And so we've been, we have been doing a lot of listening to our community. Just wanted to assure everyone of that. In the past few weeks, I've learned a lot about Cape's history, about the importance people do place in memorials, but also how one person's memorial can be another person's painful reminder of a brutal history. I did want to say, I'd like to let everyone know that this discussion of what to do with this particular monument is not new. When I and several, I think Shelley and Dan and I were running for city council two and a half years ago, or for reelection, we all attended an NAACP voter forum in which we were asked about our stance regarding this particular monument. So this conversation has been going on here in Cape Gerardo for several years. It is not simply a reaction to what's been going on elsewhere in our country, you know, just more recently. Shelley, to your point, there's been a lot of discussion about history and different people's appreciation of how that history is memorialized or celebrated or perhaps not celebrated. I see us tonight having the opportunity to create history in Cape Gerardo that we will talk about tomorrow and in years to come. And so, you know, history is a fluid thing and it evolves. I just want to state, unless I hear something radically different than I've heard in the past few weeks, I believe that this, the Confederate monument is not appropriate to the site of Cape Gerardo's future city hall. And so I'm supportive of it moving. And my thoughts on that are, there are various reasons for that, but ultimately, it does not seem to be welcoming and in fact, is that painful reminder for many people in our community. So, that's all I'll say right now.
Somebody else? No? I, I've got to say something because I've learned, the last three or four weeks, I've learned a lot of history. And I've learned it from two pretty good Civil War historians. And it enlightened me and, and I'll just tell you, when the Civil War ended, when they had these huge battles all over our United States, there were upwards of, they think now 700, 750,000 Americans that lost their lives, more Union than Confederate. And when they had these battles, there were bodies just left laying everywhere. They couldn't bury them all. And one of the things that happened right after the war was over was that the federal government created national federal cemeteries at most every battle site, at Bixburg, at Shiloh, at Gettysburg, at numerous places around the country. And a lot of those Union soldiers were collected and buried. And after that, a lot of people put up different monuments to commemorate that loss. And most of those monuments were paid for with tax dollars. They didn't do that, didn't bury Confederate soldiers though, they just left them, they left them laying there. And I understand that. And I think the historians understand that. Because of that, a lot of people in the South said, well, if they're making cemeteries, we need to somehow raise money and do the same thing. And a lot of those, a lot of those memorials that were put up at that time, were put up to commemorate fathers and grandfathers and brothers who died fighting for the Confederacy. They had, they said, well, if they're putting up monuments for the others, why can't we put up monuments? And that's why a lot of them were done. At the same time, you had a lot of awful things going on in our country. There were still people trying to say that the white race was the supreme race and there were still people that were pro-slavery, even though there wasn't any slavery anymore. There were still people trying to put black people down when they shouldn't have been. And they associated a lot of these monuments with that movement and that same thing. And I can understand, although I'm not a black person, I've got, I've got many, many black friends. And I, I can understand, I can understand why you'd look at that and feel the way you do. Truly, I do that. But, but I think a lot of that's because of just the way the perception has changed over the last 150 years. And today in our society, it's so divided and it's divided not because it was divided like it was in the Civil War, it's just divided, it's not just, it's not just a race thing. It's more than that. You've got people wanting to defund the police. Our police don't need to be defunded, they need more funds. They need more funds to hire mental health professionals. They need more funds to hire people to help with all the situations they come across. It's not just defund the police. And you've got people around the country tearing down statues of Christopher Columbus and Ulysses S. Grant and Francis Scott Key. That makes no sense whatsoever. Makes no sense whatsoever.
That's your opinion.
That's my opinion. And that's an opinion of about 80% of the emails and phone calls I get over the last month.
That's because there's a lot of racist white people in Cape Gerardo. White!
I've had, and I, and I do think that, that moving the statue is probably the appropriate thing to do and put it in the cemetery. I'm surprised it wasn't put there when they moved it from the bridge because there's over 1,200 soldiers buried there that died in the Civil War. And I just think that's a good compromise.
I hope the white people get a tax break and don't have to pay for that.
If not, at this time, I'll have Ms. Boss come up and give her presentation to council.
I'm going to keep it brief because I feel like you all have heard too much from me in the past few weeks. I just want to make two points really. First, that this monument is a beacon of hate first and foremost. You know, it was hate when it was created by the Daughters of the Confederacy to support the lost cause ideology, which erased what the Confederacy did in the Civil War and perpetuated ideas of glorification of slave owners. It was a message of hate when it was placed by the old bridge to scare black people from entering Cape Gerardo. And it's still a beacon of hate today. When I created this petition, it was covered by KFES. And that was really cool, you know, and my dad does work there, so I did have an in. But there were about 600 comments, pretty much along the lines of calling me any slur that you could call a female, telling me that I should be lynched, telling me that I should be killed. I mean, it was disgusting. And, you know, this isn't a pity party for me, but I'm a white woman and they were willing to spread that hate at me. So could you imagine if a black person was in my position? Secondly, I just want to say that I think compromise is a strong word for moving it to Lorimer Cemetery. It is still public land and that's as if each and every one of you approved of the message that it is saying by keeping it on public land. And I also would like to say that moving it to Lorimer doesn't address the two main issues of A, it being historical, or A, historical, and B, that it perpetuates that idea of hate. And I just want you guys to keep that in mind. So, thank you.
Erin?
Do I give you the petition or should I wait?
You what?
I have the signature, should I give you the signatures?
I don't, we don't need the signature.
Hello, Mayor Fox and city council members, and hello to everyone here. My name is Erin, Erin Jones, and I am a resident of Cape Gerardo County. It's an honor to be here to speak with you this evening. It is also my honor to be here to present to you this petition that urges you all with all the earnestness that we who are signatories of this petition can muster to vote in favor of keeping Cape Gerardo's Confederate monument in the public square, in Ivor Square. And I would like to clarify that this petition does specify that that monument is not to be moved from Ivor Square, nor should any of the monuments to these veterans be moved from Ivor Square. They should all remain. I am the author of the petition, which began circulating online on June 16th, and it has since garnered 1,180 signatures. This is of note because this petition has garnered a greater number of signatures in a significantly shorter period of time than the petition that demands the monument's removal. I'd like to begin by saying that those who are with me here tonight, who support this petition, are not demanding a single thing. We only ask for your ear. There is a different story to this monument, one which has almost inexplicably escaped the attention of most who wish to see this monument removed or relocated. This monument does not stand for, it was never designed to promote racial divisiveness.
I'm not going to tolerate drudeness when somebody's speaking. Anybody else who laughs, makes any comments, out the door. Do you understand?
The historical record, if one cares to take the time to look through it, and I assure you I have, clearly shows that the Cape Confederate monument was never designed, erected, or dedicated with such intentions, never. There is nothing there. If we choose to see this monument as such today, then it is precisely because we are choosing to see it in that way. Not because it was designed or intended for such purposes. And not because our local historical record supports such notions. If it did represent such purposes, if it did represent such purposes, I can assure you, this petition would have never been written. I would not be standing here today. After having completed extensive research on this monument using substantive and numerous primary historical documents, I can say with certainty that this monument was not erected to make a political statement, to intimidate black Americans, or to glorify slavery or the Confederacy. This monument was erected by individuals from this area, this region, to remember the service and the sacrifice of family members and others across this region or who were killed or maimed physically or psychologically by war. It is appropriate that these individuals be remembered and that this monument not be removed from the public square. It is wrong to single out this monument for removal. It would be wrong to move this monument to a different location. It would be equally as wrong to single out, remove, or relocate the Civil War Memorial Fountain, the James Ivor Statue, or the Vietnam War Monument. Those whose ancestors fought as Confederate soldiers should not have their families sacrificed, downplayed, and belittled by singling out this monument for removal or relocation. To do so would be to sideline the suffering experienced by these veterans, the soldiers who were killed in action, and their families. I believe that the social impact of the sacrifice of the entire generation of individuals who lived during the Civil War cannot be understood. It cannot be fathomed by us today. Over 620,000 soldiers died in that war, leaving hundreds of thousands of widows and fatherless children in the war's wake. Such numbers are incomprehensible to us today. By all accounts, both past and present, the Civil War was particularly brutal in the state of Missouri. At least 27,000 Missourians were killed during that war and our state lost one-third of its population as a result of death and outward migration due to war violence. One-third. Importantly, Missourians who fought for the Confederacy generally did so because they were the victims of harsh policies and brutal treatment by Union militia, not because they sought to perpetuate the evil institution of slavery. A signer of our petition, who is from the state of Missouri, noted that his family, which was from south of Rolla, Missouri, did not own slaves, but his family was brutalized by Union soldiers. The Union soldiers took their livestock, took their food, burned their farms to the ground, and then proceeded to hang his great-great-grandfather and his great-great-aunt. His family, which had previously been neutral, was left with no alternative but to fight. So his family joined the Missouri State Guard and the Confederate Army. I assure you, this story is not unusual in the state of Missouri. The war in Missouri was not a war of North versus South. It was a war of Missourian versus Missourian, brother versus brother. Understand, the war here was personal and it was brutal. The historic significance of this monument can hardly be overstated. According to the November 23rd, 1931 edition of the Southeast Missourian, Cape Gerardo Mayor Edward Drum accepted this monument, declaring that "no sentiment of hatred or Maoist hovered in the hearts of the people of the South." Indeed, this monument was accepted by Mayor Drum as a symbol of reconciliation between the North and the South. That is what the monument stood for. So then why today is this monument, which was once heralded for the spirit of unity that it brought to our community, now derided? Why is it now derided as a symbol of divisiveness and hate? What has changed? People today are looking at this monument through a different lens. But the fact that this monument is misunderstood by so many, that does not warrant its removal or relocation. The misunderstanding underscores our need to better understand the people of that generation and the times in which these events occurred. Did you know that the woman who served as the first president of the Cape chapter of the United Daughters of the Confederacy, Mrs. Mary Hoke, was noted in her obituary for her efforts to provide a school and a church for freed blacks in this region? No? That's okay. I thought I turned it off. That's okay. But if you did not know that, ask yourself, why is that? Hers are not the actions of a racist. And she, she was the person who conceptualized this monument and began collecting funds for it. Our history is a primary target of those who wish to divide us. We must not intentionally remove or relocate because we today are uncomfortable with the memorials placed by our ancestors. the memorials placed by our ancestors. Those memorials were placed there for a reason, and I understand that that monument was moved to prevent its destruction when the old bridge was destroyed. But that does not warrant its removal today. It is there for a reason, and it is there for us to remember. We would do well to learn, to find out the reasons that our ancestors built these memorial stones, and to not simply read a historian's interpretation of them, and to not simply assume the worst about these individuals. We need to investigate, reason, and grapple with our history, not sideline it, not silence it, and not relegate it to a cemetery. Let history tell its story without our interference. I thank you for your time. I urge you to take a stand for this monument. Let it once more reconcile this community. Do not let it pull us apart. Thank you.
Thank you both. I will say that, that we, beforehand, we were going to allow the petitioners more time because they're the ones who developed the petitions and spent a lot of time researching their issue. So, at this point, we'll let individuals come up, make comments. Please state your name, your address, and limit your comments to two minutes or less. Yes, ma'am?
Hello. My name is Sheri Estes. I live at 560 Northwestin Boulevard. I'm a resident of Ward III. Mr. Thomas? Regardless of what the history is, what we need to look at is what does this monument mean now for us in 2020 to keep it in a public place? It is now a divisive symbol. It is a symbol of hate. The state of Mississippi just took down, from its flag, the Confederate part of its flag, and that was part of its history. If the state of Mississippi can take down that part of its history, the state, the city of Cape Girardeau can take down this statue. It represents the lost cause narrative, which is a fiction. If you want to talk about what slavery was about, let's have a monument to an enslaved woman being raped by the master. Let's have an enslaved man being whipped by the overseer. Our children taken from their parents, never to be seen again. If you, if you put this in a cemetery where Union soldiers died to save the Union, the Union soldiers will be spinning in their graves. The city of Cape Girardeau's seal says, "The Union forever." "The Union forever." And we're going to install a Confederate monument on public ground? It makes no sense. It makes no sense.
My name is Geneva Allen Patterson. I live at 510 Olive Street, Cape Girardeau, Missouri. This monument was gifted to southeast Missouri by the Daughters of the Confederacy in 1931. This is one of the many monuments placed across the nation that was placed there to keep the memory of the Confederate States of America alive. Many of us understand the memory of the C.S.A. to extend beyond the end of the Civil War. For many, the memory of the C.S.A. includes the post-Civil War reign, the reign of terror that they had, that included the Black Codes, the Peonage, the Jim Crow segregation, the lynchings that happened, and the bloody Civil Rights Movement. Some in this town of Cape Girardeau were victims of this reign of terror, and others either knew it was happening, or they made it happen. This monument diminishes the sense of community that should be experienced in that public square. A monument in the public square that will honor terror suggests that our current leaders, either they don't believe that the terror happened, or they are proud to celebrate the terror that suffered in the past. We cannot be one Cape while celebrating this terror that was suffered in this city of Cape Girardeau. The pastor, the members, and the officers of St. James African Methodist Episcopal Church, we call upon you, mayor, council, to follow the recommendations of the Cape Girardeau Historic Preservation Committee to remove from the public square immediately and rehome in a space where the true history can be told, and we do not want it placed in a cemetery where the monument will receive some undue honor. Thank you.
Ramona Bailey, 1433 Kingsway, Cape Girardeau. And also a member of St. James, Cape. Before I get into that, first I want to say we appreciate the bathroom going in at Indian Park. We come to you guys with so many other things. So, it was nice to see that is being put up. Finally! But anyway, it's there. So, as far as this thing is concerned, I pretty much agree with everything she said, because I'm from St. James. The meter removal, I think that was the best suggestion from the Historic Preservation Committee. I mean, y'all tossed the ball to them to say, get their idea, see what they thought about it, and they came back eight to zero. They didn't need to be immediately removed because it holds no historic value. And if you move it to a cemetery on public funds, where, on public property, if it's being maintained by public funds, I don't see that as being something that offends so many people, should have to pay for its upkeep. You know, so if y'all can find somebody who wants to take care of it for free, not on public property. Like I said, I initially wanted to just, why did they move it from the river up to here? They could have just tossed it into the river. When they first, whoever decided, I'm surprised there's no record of who gave the okay to move it to where it is right now. So, if y'all could dig a little deeper, the Historic Committee already did, and they didn't come up with anything, so. Who put it there? We don't know. But it does need to come down or be removed. I'm okay with it being moved somewhere where it can be given the correct narrative that it was erected for. You know, so people can know, well, this is what they tried to do. It lasted for a long time, but it came to a stop at some point, and this is where it ended up. So, if you're not going to break it, tear it down, destroy it, move it somewhere where it can receive the correct narrative so people like me and we don't have to see that in a public place, you know, daily, and just to know that it's somewhere else being cared for, taken care of, is also not something that we wish to see.
Hi, I'm Kelly Downs, 1847 Ricardo here in Cape. I'm going to start with a quote from Maya Angelou. "History, despite its wrenching pain, cannot be unlived, and if faced with courage, need not be lived again." When we're talking about this, I noticed she was talking about the Civil War here. The reason that we had the Trail of Tears, you know, that's a big thing in Cape, that was to make room for slavery. The reason we pushed Indians off their land was to make room for more slavery. And so, that became entrenched in the fabric of Missouri. And then, when Union armies came in, yeah, they butted heads with people who wanted to be part of the South. And once they left, then that came back, that fervor came back. And so, if we're looking at the Daughters of the Confederacy at this time, we are seeing all over the nation, in North Carolina, and places all over the country, their alignment with the Ku Klux Klan. Is that the legacy we want for people in our town? To be aligned with members of the Ku Klux Klan? That's not compromise. That is giving way to tyranny. And I will remind, Plessy versus Ferguson established that separate but equal is no longer. If you're forcing Black people in this town to pay for something when that's not a part of the history that they want, then having, that's not serving their public interests. Now, let's look at the Daughters of the Confederacy. I'm sure you guys have heard all about this, but they have had many propaganda campaigns. They passed legislation in textbooks in the South to make sure that textbooks were corrected to say that it was the war between the states. So, we would forget that they seceded from the United States of America. So, the two lasting legacies, and this will be the last thing I say, I thank you for your time. The two lasting legacies of the Civil War are the economic disenfranchisement of Black people and this cultural racism of white people. We have a choice to move forward. I will remind you that we have acknowledged the evil of slavery, but we have not acknowledged white complicity. That's what we do here now. Thank you for your time.
My name is Michael Tenisketter. I live at 1825 New Madred Street here in Cape. I came in here today to talk to you all about the Articles of Confederation. Listed in the Articles of Confederation, it talks about slavery. The Confederacy stood for slavery. And Article IV, Section II, and on, talks about slaves. Talks about if the slaves are transported or taken anywhere, or if they escape, they are legally required to come back. So, ladies and gentlemen, the Confederacy, they're losers. That's a participation trophy out there, ladies and gentlemen. And on a council that is predominantly white, to sit here and debate whether or not we should keep this racist monument, which is what it is, when we get down to brass tacks as abhorrent? And it makes me sad that the city of Cape Girardeau has to have such a huge debate on moving this participation trophy piece of rock from the losers of the traitors of the United States of America. If you truly are Americans, the Confederacy has no place, zero place, in this country, and to be so adamant about keeping a piece of that is honestly disgusting. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you for spraying. Good evening. I'm Deborah Mitchell Braxton, a longtime resident of Cape Girardeau, Missouri, 3734 Old Hopper Road. I have two quick points to make. I'm also the executive director of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Celebration here at Cape Girardeau, and an educator. My question to the council and to the people that are here today, why would we want to preserve an era of history that is symbolic of demeaning, demoralizing, discriminating, and diminishing a race of people? Now, as an educator, we know that history is either his or her story the way they decide to tell it to us. The only Black school I know about was the school my mom and dad went to, the John L. Scott School, because they couldn't go to the White Central High School. The last point, they both graduated, by the way, is not about how or who perceives it, or their intentions. It is what it represented, and it's about how it makes the current citizens of Cape Girardeau feel, and how it makes me feel that we've had 60 years of a little freedom. Racism does exist in Cape Girardeau. I was part of it as Southeastern Missouri State. I couldn't keep my job because of racism, institutionalized racism. So, by having a statue, why do you want a statue that promotes divisiveness? God bless America, because he needs to bless Cape Girardeau.
I'm Dr. Paul Clark. I've lived in this community for 38 years. I grew up in Carroll, Illinois before that. I've heard some amazing things tonight. One of them was that anybody that stands for maintaining a historical statue is aligned with the KKK. Are you serious?
That's not what she said.
That's exactly what she said.
She said that the Daughters of the Confederacy are aligned with the KKK.
No. She implied the other, she implied the otherwise.
She said what she said.
Now, just a minute.
Let him talk. He's talking to us, not you.
I think we've all seen what's going on in the United States today. Okay, I think we've all seen what's going on in the United States today. I don't really think we need to import that to Cape Girardeau, okay? I think it's pretty obvious where the hate is coming from. You know, when people say this monument is, represents hate, that's just their opinion. I happen to agree with Erin. I thought she made a very good presentation. She presented some opposite views. I read, I went down and looked at the statue today, and I was, has anybody read the plaque? Do you know what it says? I would think you'd want to keep it. It says, "This monument must now remind us that their loss actually meant liberty, justice, and freedom for thousands of their fellow Missourians," meaning Black Missourians. Why would you want to take that down when it makes that kind of statement? It's clear they are saying what that monument stands for. How many people know what the Enola Gay is?
We know what the Enola Gay is.
Yeah, okay, okay. That was, the Japanese attacked Pearl Harbor 60 years ago. We dropped two atomic weapons on them. We're responsible for over 200,000 Japanese deaths. We are now their allies. We do not, they can come here, we do not take Japanese things down. We fought in Vietnam. You can visit Vietnam now. It's time to let the past go by and get over it. Okay? Because it doesn't, who in their right minds thinks that any of this serves to improve relationships between Black and white people? Well, I'm sorry, but you are definitely wrong.
Hi, guys. Hi. My name's Amber Moyers. I live at 624 Coke Avenue here in Cape Girardeau. And keep your white tears for someone else. Like, we don't have time for this. It's 2020. Why are we still even debating this? Like, why is this even a question? The Confederate soldiers who died were not Americans. They were traitors to the Union. They don't deserve a monument. You don't go to Germany and Poland and see monuments to Hitler, do you? No, you do not! Because oppression, and fascism, and racism, and hate are wrong. And to sit up here with your white privilege and act like it's not that big of a deal? Really? Really? That is why younger generations, like myself, are sick and tired. That is why we are taking up the Black Lives Matter movement, even though we're not Black. But we can see that systemic racism is killing people. Systemic racism is having a mostly white board of people telling us to keep a racist monument in our town. Come on, guys. Like, I understand it's fun to be a white man, but can you, for one minute, just one minute in your life, try to empathize with other people? One minute. Think about what it's like for Ramona, or Michelle, or Geneva, or Leslie to have to walk past that monument. Can you do that? I don't think you can. So, I am just really livid. I can't believe we're actually having this discussion in 2020, and I cannot wait for that thing to come down. I cannot wait. I would rather see it destroyed than anything. That thing has no place in civil society. Period. Period.
Rebuttal. Mayor Fox, I've got your copy here. I just, I felt like I had to say something. It's real short. Leave the historical markers and monuments alone.
Who are you and where do you live?
Oh, I'm sorry. Chuck Meyer, 1565 Saratoga, Cape Girardeau. Leave the historical markers and monuments alone. What are you trying to do? Change history? Erase history? There really was Confederate States of America from 1861 to 1862. There really was Confederate states of America from 1861 to 1865, it was a huge, important period of our history. How far would you take this ignorance? Remember, the Gateway Arch in St. Louis is a memorial to Thomas Jefferson. And don't forget the Washington Monument, and Washington DC was built to commemorate George Washington, both slave-owning presidents. It's history, people. You don't get to choose your history. Where would you hide the arch? Where would you hide the Washington Monument? What would you like to do?
My name is Stafford Moore, Jr. I am the pastor of Mount Mariah Ministries here in Cape Girardeau, Missouri. As we know, this is a touchy subject, racism. In our community, we have many people on different sides with different views and different understandings of it, but as a pastor, I have to look at this thing through another lens, and that's through God's lens. Now, I believe the reason we're here is more the problem than, oh, how we got to this point, in my opinion, is the bigger problem, more so than the monument itself, because of the words that was in the newspaper did disturb me. Fox, you said, "I think the commission bowed to activism." Could the commission also have looked at it and said, "This is wrong"? Did it have to be them bowing to something? I believe our words carry weight. I was listening to you, Robin, and you know, we friends, but you said this. You said, "We don't stand with what they, those who fought for the Confederacy stood for," but yet, you want to hold them up in honor. I ask you a question, how can the two meet? How can you not stand for what they stood for, yet want to honor them? Now, I don't really care what y'all do with the monument. I'm black, and I'm saying that. I don't care. Because it's really the heart that we need to get to the matter of. Where is your heart? If a group of people feel like this reminds them of a time that hurt them, why would you stand because it don't hurt you and force them to endure that? Now, I could be getting myself in trouble, I don't know, but I'm up here because I feel led to. I heard the young lady said, "What would Germany do with Hitler?" They put him in a history book. We read about him. We able to remember him that way. When I was in Central, I read about Hitler and what he did and all those that stood with him. But we do not erect nothing to remember him. Why? Because we believe he stood on the wrong side of the argument. Now, this is something you gonna have to wrestle with within yourself. It's just brick and mortar with somebody's words who had an ideology that might differ from other people. It don't matter what that man or that woman, or whoever them people said, don't make what they said true. We gotta get to the heart of what we're doing. We are the city of Cape Girardeau, and I talked to pastor friends of mine, and this was what my fear was, that we was gonna be reacting rather than being proactive, that we was gonna be reacting to things rather than getting out in front of things and dealing with our community, so our community can stay healthy. So now we are reacting. Why? Because we ran and hid, because we act like we didn't see the motion and all the commotion going on around us. Now we're dealing with it because we didn't think, maybe there's a group of people over here that might not feel that way while there's another group that feel this way, let's bring them together before we speak. So that's all I have to say. In the end, the Bible said, "Watch as well as pray." Watch. Something is happening in our community, and something is happening in our nation, and something is happening across the world. And discernment will say, "It's time to watch." It's time for us to step out of our comfort zones and really start looking at what is going on with our people, and what do we need to do to better it? That's all I have to say.
You're doing a wonderful job. I'm Michelle Jackson, 1824 Margaret Street, member of St. James Amy Church, owner and operator of African Cultural Collective. And I, this is a very gross, this is the most blatant display of cognitive dissonance I've ever seen in my entire life. Blatant. Blatant. Because you know what the Confederate history means to black people. Rape, suffering, lynching, males getting buck-braided. There's, there's tons of other things in our history. When we look at that thing, it's devastation to the stolen Africans of America. That's what that means. That's what we see when we walk by. And the fact that you can say, "This is a beautiful display of our history of the Confederate," is an absolute insult. And why now? Why are we upset now? Because we've had 400 years, almost 500 years, of having to restrain ourselves. Right now, I'm shaking, right now. Because it is taking the amount of restraint that black people have dealing with white folks every day. And the fact that we have to look at something that y'all are proud of, that represents devastation for the stolen Africans of America. We are not Americans. We are not welcome here, and it shows. We are stolen people. We are stolen people. And you make it clear every day, we're not welcome in America.
I'm David Glassetter. I live here in Cape at 2021 Anthony Drive. First of all, I want to say that I'm against moving or destroying or getting rid of any monuments, whether they're Union monuments or Confederate monuments. You know, if we start with monuments, where does it lead to from there? You know, Cape Girardeau is named after a gentleman by the name of Jean Baptiste de Giraudot. I think I'm saying that correctly. Well, the French were big into slavery. I don't know if y'all know that. I did a little research. It says, "Though the Portuguese and British dominated the transatlantic slave trade, the French were the third-largest slave traders, elevated to that rank by the staggering numbers of Africans delivered to Santa Domingo, Haiti in the late 18th century. Of the 1,381,000 Africans loaded onto French ships during the course of the transatlantic trade, 1,165,000 survived the Middle Passage to encounter harsh conditions, mostly in French Caribbean colonies." Today, it's tearing down monuments, or moving them, or whatever. Tomorrow, it's changing the name of Cape Girardeau, Missouri, because Mr. Giraudot was probably a slave owner.
Hi, Pastor George Smith, 215 East Cape Rock Drive. Sitting here and I listen to a lot of this stuff, and, and I'm like Pastor Stafford, I'm in prayer, usually before I get up. Because when, when you look at this argument, that really shouldn't be an argument, and you have people that will come up, and like I say, y'all know how we feel, I mean, most black people anyway, and a lot of white people, seems like, that this statue, this rock, or whatever the people want to call it, what it represents to us. And you said in, 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 in front of us and to our face, basically telling you, you don't care what we think or how we feel. When you say, "Let's move it to a cemetery," that, what's, what's that? Absolutely nothing. It's taking it from one spot, putting it in another spot, and the racism is still there in our face. I'm, I'm gonna ask you a question. Did y'all see, it was on the news, I think, and downtown the other day, there's this 12-year-old kid, and some kid came out and punched, that didn't raise, but you didn't. That made you mad! Okay, and I don't support what the, what the young man did, to punch him, yeah, he should, whatever happens, he, that's what he deserves. But that made you mad! But you don't give a damn about us getting mad, about what that statue, that's the same punch we take every day when we walk past there. But it's okay, you can see that! You can see that what happened to that young white boy. If it was a black boy, it wouldn't have been the same outrage. Wouldn't have been the same outrage at all. And I feel for the young man. Nobody should have to go through that. But you don't see what we see every day. And like I said, we got this white panel making rules and laws for us that we don't have no part of. We say, "This is our city," but really, it's your city. All we do is, we pay taxes that we're made to pay. We don't pay them, we go to jail, something's gonna happen. You make all the rules for us, you got Sister Shelley on the board, but when it's all said and done, just like you're doing, you, you hired, did y'all pay for this panel that, that did the discussion to make the recommendations for what you do to the panel, what, what the statue? Who, who called them in to do this? Did y'all ask them to come in and do?
They're the Historic Preservation Commission. That's their, usually they deal with historic.
Okay, and, and so you, you allowed them to go through all of this horse and pony show to say that eight to zero, get rid of it, now we gotta come back and say, "No, I don't think we should get rid of it." Then you guys say, "Well, I think we should keep it." That tells us everything we need to know about you. Everybody in here who says, "I want to keep it," that tells us all we need to know about you. That statue represents racism to the highest degree. And so that tells me all I need to know about you, as the mayor, as the city council. It tells us everything that we need to know about you. If you, if you're so adamant about keeping this, that tells me what I need to know about you, and I don't even know you. But now I do know something about you. So, my time is up, they said.
My name is Audra Novak. I live at 150 Enclave Circle. I'm kind of the SMO dream, right? I came here for school and have built my, my adult life here. That's the goal. You're not keeping people like me if you keep that monument. Now, we've talked a lot about history. I find it very ironic that we're talking about history in education and how that's preserved in statues when it has all failed you. Took me about three seconds, there is the link between Ku Klux Klan and the Daughters of the, of the Confederacy. If, if I put together a group called Daughter of the Loyalists and asked to put up a picture, a statue of King George III, and I put that date as July 4th, you would all understand that I had an ulterior motive to that, yes? This statue was put up in 1930. We see what else happened in 1930? The rise of the Ku Klux Klan. We have an outdated piece of art that you were told meant an honor, a sacrifice. Confederate veterans were not giving veteran benefits because they were not veterans of the United States. They were traitors, they were domestic terrorists. If I'm this emotional, imagine how much hurt other people are going through. You do not get to hear someone say, "This hurts me," and argue about why they should be hurt. You do not. You know, I had some culture shock when I moved here. One I learned was, "Bless your heart" does not mean a nice thing. That may say, "For the glory and sacrifice," that says, "You are less than, you are not welcome, and we had you where we wanted you once, and if we could, we would do it again." That's what that says. I encourage all of you, internet's free, man. It's very easy to get some research, some accurate research. There's a reason there's not a Sons of the Confederacy, they have their own group, it's a three-letter acronym.
Hi, my name is Cindy Mayer. I live at 633 Highland Drive. And Mr. Fox, I also have black friends, but that does not mean that as a white person, I can possibly know or the perception of what the black community sees in that statue. To me personally, it doesn't bother me, but that's because I don't have this history that you so eloquently spoke about. I love Cape Girardeau. It's where 40 years ago I met my husband at SMO. It's where 20 years ago we chose to move back to, to put down roots. I, like Mr. Guard, am tired of the divisiveness. I can see both sides. I think a good compromise would be to move it to Lorimer, to move it to the cemetery. I think you should take your, the Historical Preservation Commission's recommendation and move the statue. Thank you.
I am Pastor William Bird, Jr., Greater Dimension Ministries. I am standing because I foresaw this, and this happening. And I shared a couple of city council meetings ago, that if we don't get in front of this, it's going to bring some things that we did not want to bring to our city. Things that were not already in our city, but if we could have stepped out in front of it, we could have actually possibly avoided some of these ill feelings that we have towards each other. And I shouldn't feel that way about you. And you should, no, I'm just saying. And you shouldn't feel a certain way about me. And there are certain feelings that are going on in this room, that we, when we walk out of here, people are gonna look at each other totally different. And this could have been avoided, simply by the words that we choose to say. Mayor Fox, when I spoke to the Southeast Missourians, I said your words were insensitive. I said that because I felt that was a very kind word. Because when you had a board member who wished to bring it before the committee and say, "I feel like this is something that I can see that could be a problem," and for you to make those statements, it's almost as if you disregarded your council. And if you disregard your council, and if you're gonna do things your way, and if we're looking at the leadership of Cape Girardeau, we need to be accountable for what we do and what we say. Now, I'm a firm believer in unity. I promote unity. And I preach the gospel. I preach the gospel. I preach the good news of what Jesus Christ can do. And what we're having here is some heart issues, some things that are going on within our heart, that we need to do some self-evaluations of ourselves, of what we actually believe in and who we believe in. Because if we believe in Him, then some of these things that we are saying and sharing shouldn't even be part of the conversation. But I can tell you, I'm hurting, and it's like I, I thought about the Harlem Globetrotters, Metallica. Ah! Ah! And they start rubbing his leg. And he says, "Not his leg, it's his arm." And so when people are telling you what's going on with them, you have to be man enough and woman enough to say, "Hey, I understand what you're saying," and listen to what they're saying, and then try to come to a compromise. Now, I, I could care less where that thing goes. For real. Because what it means to me, I know it doesn't mean to you or maybe others, but you need to know what it means to me. And acknowledge that it means that to me. And, and have some type of empathy regarding what it means to me. Because if you haven't been beaten, and if your forefathers haven't been beaten, you would have no clue of how I feel and the enraged that I feel. You would have no clue. And walking into a restaurant and people looking at you different, you would have no clue, because most of them gonna look like you, and most of them own it. And then when we try to apply for grants and, and pails and all this kind of stuff to get a, a restaurant, we have to jump through so many, many more hoops. There's, there is a disparity, there is a disparity in this city. But we're looking, we're looking for leadership. We're looking for leadership. We're looking for leaders who are willing to go against the norm and stand in the voice of the people. That's all we're looking for. That's all we're looking for. And once you can do that, and stand firm on your decisions and not turn when somebody else come and whisper in your ear, and stand and make a decision, well, then we're gonna all be in a better place. But I'm for unity. Now, the first three letters of unity is U-N-I. We're gonna have to deal with some stuff with U-N-I. We're gonna have to do some stuff with U-N-I, and then we can bring the T, we can tie it together. But until you hear my voice and I hear your voice, and we come to a conclusion and say, "I don't always agree with you, but let's do something to make this work for the both of us," we're gonna keep having the same problem. But the thing about it is, this problem is not going away. Matter of fact, we can either, we can Matter of fact, we can either, we can put some water on this fire, or we're gonna fan this fire. And I pray that we put water on this fire, so this does not get out of hand and not make this city a mockery among this state.
I'm sure the city got a discount on that stuff by the case. I'm Pat Wiseman, County Road 621, Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Don't look at the skin color I have here. Look at hers, look at his. We're damn near alike, ain't we? I'm half-blood Indian. Now, you hear us rattling and raving? No? What was taken from us, our properties? We were enslaved, beaten.
Sir, would you address the council?
I'm sorry. We were enslaved and beaten, what have you. I'd like to see an Indian monument over there myself, but I know what the council's gonna do, they're going to move the monument. It's pretty well, you can figure that out. But let's move all three of them, because you're not gonna make anybody else happy unless you move them all three. Very simple. All this stuff right now going on about tear this statue down, tear that statue down, Jackson changed the mascot, changed mascot of Tampa, but all these, it's ridiculous. Let's screw up, everybody now is America. It's no black, white, red, yellow, green. But, yeah, it is, but it shouldn't be. It all should be just American now. But you're going to move the monument, it's pretty well for said, but let's move them all three to the cemetery. To me, it'd be respectable, a nice place to put them. Now, as for my family, except I'm half-blood Indian, on my grandmother's side was a Davis and a Hatfield. We all know about the Hatfields, we all know about Davis. He was brother against brother in our family, we had both of them fight on both sides. My great-granduncle was shot at Jackson, Missouri, after the Civil War, coming home in his horse in a Confederate uniform. They shot him because he was a Confederate soldier. Didn't kill him, but he killed his horse, something he had left. But what I'm saying is, go ahead and move it, I'd rather see where it's at, but go ahead and move it, be respectful, move all three. And all this tearing down monuments and everything from slavery, look at our wall down by the sea, something's gonna happen down there, we don't do something there. That's our next big problem coming up there. Mark my words. But here's what my challenge is, everybody said about slavery, look at your money. Give up your money, folks. You don't want slavery, and who stood for it? Give up the dollar bills, hundred-dollar bills, fifties, fives, tens, all of it. But I support keeping the monument, but moving it to Lorimer Cemetery with all of the three. I ask you to consider that, which would be respectful to everybody, both Union and Confederate, and the black Union officers, which were not allowed to join the white Union Army by word of Abraham Lincoln. Thank you.
I'm Correll Edgar, I live at 1613 Curry in Cape, I'm a resident of Ward 5. I am born and bred in Cape Girardeau and Cape Girardeau County. I'm about as white as you can get, blond hair, blue eyes, and most of my family presents the same way. I was raised here, I moved away for college and got married, and I came back to raise my son here. He's fifteen years old, and he knows better than all y'all do. He is a wonderful student, and he is a wonderful child, but he knows that that symbol means racism. All our young people know it, all our old folks need to know it. I know it, I'm forty-three. I'm ashamed of y'all, honestly, I really am. If you had listened to the Historic Preservation Commission, all of them made a statement, they all made individual statements that were very well thought out, very well researched, and they did not want to just move it, they wanted to take it down. Moving it just causes another problem somewhere else, because it will become glorified somewhere else. And that's a huge problem. And I think we should let the black community decide what to do with it. Because black lives do matter, and we need to acknowledge that in our community, or we are gonna be in big trouble. It makes us look pretty bad, it's embarrassing, honestly, I'm embarrassed. And obviously, I'm shaken, so I'm gonna sit down.
My name is Calvin Bird, I am a Cape Girardian, and I am a black man, if you didn't know. I wanted to say two things, first of all, say a few things. First of all, thank you. I thought what you presented was presented well, even though I didn't agree with it, but I think that you presented well, and I thank you for that information, because I think we are Americans, and everyone's to have a right to voice their opinion, which is why I'm getting ready to voice mine. And I'm gonna make it brief. I was blessed a few weeks ago to speak to a group of predominantly white people at Cape First Church with Pastor Gary Brothers, and we were on a committee, and we talked about unity, or one voice. I gave an example of a story that has kinda gotten me a little credit, it's a street credit. But it talked about a house, two houses being on the same street. And I own the house on the street, and I'm a black man, and Robert, you own a house on the street and you're a white man, but my house is on fire. And while my house is burning, you come to me and you say, not too literally, but you come to me and say, but I got a house on the street too. But my house is on fire. And if you can't see that my house is on fire, and we don't put that fire out, then everybody's house is gonna catch on fire, because you didn't help me. And then if you come to me to help me when you need something, then I'm gonna look at you kinda funny. The second thing is, I'm a pastor, I'm a preacher, and I'm a third-generation preacher. My father was a preacher, my grandmother, my brothers are preachers, my uncles are preachers. That's our vocation, that's what we do. So, we preach. So now I'm at a podium, and I got about thirty seconds left. The Bible says.
Five seconds left.
Okay, I got five seconds left. The Bible says, when we talk about memorials, and I was thinking about a memorial and what a memorial means, the Bible says Joshua was taking the children of Israel over into the promised land. And when they got ready to cross over Jordan, the Bible says that the Lord parted the waters. And He said, I want you to grab a stone out of the water, and I want you to place that stone here on the other side, so that every time somebody passes by there, they remember where you came from and what this represented. When I look at this memorial, my dear sister, and I understand what you're saying, but you gotta understand that every time I pass by that memorial, I'm going to remember what that means. And the Bible also says, so that your children's children can remember what it means. So my challenge is, if it represents a horrific time in our past, why in the world would I wanna just move it to another place, so another generation of people will continue to remember what had happened and what it meant? So, my brothers and sisters, I think that we need to find a way, now Brother Staff made a good point about, we learn about history, and we learn about history in history books. I don't think that we should be memorializing a part of history that brings so much hurt and so much anger. If you are my brother, if you are my sister, even though it's something that represents you, the Bible says, if there's something that offends your brother, you take it down.
My name is Shetaz Robinson, and I live at 402 South Ellis. I'm gonna make this short because we already have the facts. We've already sat here for like an hour, hour and a half, and everybody has given us the facts. Mistake that gave us the facts the last time that we had the pleasure of being here. I don't understand why you would ask the suggestion of the Historical Preservation Committee, and you ask the members of your panel, and then you just ignore them and do what you wanna do anyway. I don't get it. Mr. Fox, I am so, I, I'm shocked, I'm shocked. I'm shocked because I had an expectation for you, besides being a mayor, besides being, you know, the dentist that I just discovered recently. I'm sorry, I thought the mayor was a full-time job, y'all, I thought you had to be. You're a dentist too, he pretty good too, but anyway. What I'm saying, what I'm saying is, I had an expectation for you as a person, as a man. And when I saw that you released that statement, saying that you were shocked by the committee's like, suggestion? Oh, you let me down, you let me down big time. You let me down big time, because I had respect for you. I didn't know how you felt, like, political alliance and things like that, that doesn't matter to me. You know, I judge a person by a conversation, by a handshake, and we had that. So I thought we were a little bit better than that, but my mistake. She gave us the cake already, she gave us the cake, she gave us all the ingredients that we needed to make the proper decision on this. Remove this statue, Mr. Fox, do what you need to do. You say, you say leadership, just like he said, everybody's looking for a leader to go outside the norm. This is outside the norm. The normal thing to do would be to keep the statue where it is, or just move it and say, okay, well, it's out of eyesight, so we can just, you know, whatever. No, do the right thing, lead in the right direction, that's it.
Hello, City Council, my name is McKenzie, I live on 7 North Benton. I just wanted to say that I believe that the statue should come down. Moving it isn't a compromise, because a compromise would be to take it down, because there is no compromise whenever it comes to racism. Plain and simple. You can't compromise the fact that over four hundred years, people were enslaved, and the Confederates fought for this slavery. You can't compromise that. In this town, we need unity, we need it more now than ever, and right now, we can't have it whenever we have a statue and a city council that doesn't wanna take it down, or a mayor in general. We have to have unity, because without that, nothing's going to change. Our society, our community will stay the same. I'm gonna make it short, because I don't wanna go on and on about it, because I'm not the person with all the facts, but I am a person who has lived in this town for over five years, and I can tell you that the racism in this town is alive and well. That's all I have to say, thank you.
My name's Jada, I live on 13 North Fountain, right down the street. I have to walk by that monument almost daily if I choose to walk to work. The only thing I really have to say is, it's divisive to me and the people that look like me, and I feel like that's predominantly a lot of us, a lot of us that actually give two craps if it comes down or not, because it doesn't affect, I feel like my white brothers and sisters as much as it affects my black brothers and sisters. So, I feel like the people that came to speak today, I hope that you guys take their thoughts and community-like consideration. That's all, that's really it.
Jeffrey Biddle, 2256 Derbyshire Lane, Ward 4. It's clear from everything we've heard today that there's pain in this room that should have been listened to long before this meeting ever happened, and long before it ever had to happen. On the steps of the courthouse where this monument is located, slaves were sold. During the Civil War, this was a Union city. The Confederacy, who were traitors, attacked us and killed citizens of Cape Girardeau, a city and country which they chose to leave. The Daughters of the Confederacy, which was not your little neighborhood book club, friendly women sitting around, that was an organization defined by their racism, by their propaganda campaigns, and by their desire to make slavery seem okay. This monument will never be able to shake that connotation. It will never be able to shake its inherent racism, no matter where you move it, it will not do better in a cemetery, and you would do well to take the recommendation of the Historic Preservation Commission. You should move this monument and put it in a museum where you can tell all the stories of how much pain this has caused to families, to every individual and to every community. You tell that people felt like they were getting stabbed when they walked by this and punched. You tell whose ancestors were getting raped and beaten and what that represents. That's the history that you wanna preserve from this, and that can only be done with a plaque telling that, not a plaque next to this in a public square telling that a fight for slavery was a fight for freedom. I've lived here almost all my life, and I'm ashamed that that still flies.
My name's Carson Gary, I'm from Altamir, Missouri, up north, and 856 County Road 513. And I'm a young high schooler, and they all say that they were taught in these schools that it was about slavery. I have read books from 1965, books, journals, and it was not about slavery. It was not about slavery, slavery was at, was a part of that time, but a little history, Robert E. Lee, the commanding general of the Confederate Army, took his black, the black children into his house each day and taught them how to read, write, and the Bible. And another thing is that you always say the black, it's racist, white against black. And way back, blacks went into other black tribes and captured them and sold them to other people. They were, it was not whites against black, it was blacks from blacks against the beginning, and it just turned out to whites against blacks in the end, and it's not whites against blacks. Tons, only five percent of the Confederate population owned slaves. Tons didn't even see the Confederate soldiers, and there was lots of black men who fought on the Confederate side, and they fought protecting their home that they thought were being invaded. And then when they, after the war, these black soldiers went to give up, and the Union would not recognize them as soldiers, they would not recognize them as men, they put them down, and, yeah.
All right, I'm gonna keep this short as well. My name is Madeline Anderson, I live on 1512 Bessie Street. So I just heard him mention the Bible, I think that's a common occurrence to people, all lives matter. I was, I went to a Christian school, private school, the first thing I learned as a child was to love thy neighbor. So what really confuses me is how we can see color, and you, like, everybody's a person, everybody's a human being, and I just don't understand how you could even comprehend that. I just really don't know how it got to this, I don't understand how people think a Confederate flag is right. I don't understand how these people, for years, have been treated like they're nothing. So, I think you need to figure that out.
I recommend that she gets a raise tonight.
Are there any appearances for any other items not listed on the agenda this evening? If not, we'll move into Agenda Review.
We have three public hearings tonight. The first public hearing is for rezoning of property at 920 North Middle, uh, from R2 to RUMD. Our second public hearing is also a rezoning at 900 South Kings Highway from M2 to M1. And then the third public hearing is, um, to rezone property on the north side of La Salle Avenue, east of Baldwin Drive, from C2 to R1. Uh, each three of these have been through, um, our planning and zoning, and come to you tonight as a public hearing, and the first reading of several, uh, of the items on your agenda. We have, uh, the consent agenda consists of the second and third readings of, uh, ordinances from last time of a record plat of DeWitt subdivision, of accepting the permanent utility easement from, uh, Morgan Distributing, and, uh, acknowledged receipt of the annexation petition from Midamer- Mid America Highway K. The, uh, number eight is a, um, resolution to distribute, distribute the request for proposals for the 811 Broadway project, uh, and move that forward. And then, uh, we have the acceptance of the public improvements at Morgan Distribution. Um, are there any of those items on the consent agenda that you'd like to remove from the consent agenda?
Are we removing the reservation from the Historic Preservation Board for my special?
Yes, that's, that's number 10. It's already removed. Thank you, Dan. Um, that'll be Bill number 20-106. Uh, this is the recommendation of the Historic Preservation Commission regarding the monument in Ivor Square, and, uh, it's been removed so that you can discuss that and determine, uh, and a resolution has been proposed, which would accept that resolution, uh, accept that recommendation as proposed. We have a few new ordinances. Like I said, the first, uh, um, the first three are from the public hearings, and then, uh, number 14 is a change in, uh, speed limits on, in Chapter 26. This is to match MoDOT's, um, recommendation of speed limits in construction zones, and this is, and then number 15 is, uh, a permanent easements from the Liberty Apartments. Uh, 16 is the permanent utility and sewer easements from Decatur Street right away, and then 17 is, uh, the 30-minute parking along Broadway Street. This is, uh, in front of Mississippi Mounds. So, uh, those items, and then, uh, we do have a closed session item tonight for your consideration. Yes?
We do?
Yes.
Really? Yes.
Yes. That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay. Uh, we'll now move into regular session and have Rob call.
Bob Fox. Bob Fox.
Here.
Robbie Gard.
Here.
Stacy Kinder.
Here.
Shelley Moore.
Here.
Dan Preston.
Here.
Nate Thomas.
Here.
Shannon Truxell.
Here.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Motion moved by Robbie, seconded by Nate. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. We have three public hearings this evening. The first is a public hearing to consider a request to rezone property at 920 North Middle Street from R2, Single Family Urban Residential, to RUMD, which is Residential Urban Mixed Density. Anybody here this evening to speak on behalf of this public hearing? If not, I will close the public hearing. The second public hearing is to consider a request to rezone property at 900 South Kings Highway from M2, Heavy Manufacturing Industrial, to M1, Light Manufacturing Industrial. Anybody here this evening to speak on behalf of this public hearing? If not, I will close that public hearing. The third is to consider a request to rezone property located on the north side of La Salle Avenue, east of Baldwin Drive, from C2, Highway Commercial District, to R1, Single Family Suburban Residential. Anybody here this evening to speak about this public hearing? If not, I will close the public hearing. Anybody here tonight want to comment on any item on the agenda this evening? Any comments for, for any item on the agenda? If not, we'll move into the consent agenda. Eric?
Bill number 20-96, an ordinance proving a record plat of DeWitt subdivision, ordinance proving a record plat of DeWitt subdivision, bill number 20-97, an ordinance accepting a permanent utility easement from Morgan Distributing, Inc., for property located at 4110 Nash Road, an ordinance accepting a permanent utility easement from Morgan Distributing, Inc., property located at 4110 Nash Road. Number 20-98, a resolution acknowledging receipt of an annexation petition from Mid America Highway K LLC, and sitting in public hearing regarding the proposed annexation. Number 20-105, a resolution authorizing distribution of a request for proposals for property at 811 Broadway in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri, and authorizing certain actions connected therewith.
You have before you the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Robbie, seconded by Dan.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Bill number 20-106, a resolution of the Cape Girardeau City Council to accept the recommendation of the Historic Preservation Commission regarding the CSA Monument in Ivor Square in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Motion by Dan.
Seconded.
Seconded by Shannon. Any discussion?
Can you, can I, can we just be reminded of exactly what is stated in the, uh, the recommendation? I, I, I'm not saying read the whole thing, I'm just saying what, what?
The, the part of it, and I, please staff fill in, but it was that it to be, be taken down.
Immediately?
Immediately. No public, it was that no public property and no funds to be used in perpetuity for that.
So the recommendation is that it, it does not end up on pu, on any kind of public property? And the last part was what?
No public funds.
No, no. No public funds to be used.
It should not be on public property or supported by public funding.
Correct. And, and I, and I would, I would go back to the way we started, and what I said is that I, I, like I said, I thought a compromise was Lormer Cemetery, from, from what I heard in constituents, I thought that was a compromise. Um, I would not, um, I wanted to know what we were going to do with it regardless. I, I wanted a decision on, because I didn't want this dragging out any much, any further, because that didn't say what we were going to do with it. It just said, tear it down immediately. That, unless I'm hearing that proposal?
It did. It said it's gonna be stored in the facility until they can find a museum that could properly house it and have, and put information available.
And that's where I have a problem, because I don't know where it's gonna go.
Well, and so for me, from the beginning of this conversation, I've thought the best place for this is to be in the River Heritage Museum. We are a community that has a River Heritage Museum that is supposed to frame the heritage of the river region, and so I, I feel as though that would be the best location for it. The difficulty of that is that that is technically a piece of public property. And so, that building is an old fire station. And so that's a, that's the, my hangup with this, with the verbiage in this, is that I, I personally have thought that it needs to be in the River Heritage Museum from the beginning. And so, but it's, it's, it is public property, and that's, that's the sticking point that's tough with the exact recommendation from the Historic Preservation Council.
The, the public property issue is also a stickler with me because of the, both those reasons. And I, before this, Kellerman Foundation ever came to fruition, I had already written down what I thought was a good recommendation, and that would be to refer this to staff, to let them do research in consultation with the Historic Preservation Commission, with the Kellerman Foundation, or whoever they deem necessary, and then find a place to put it. You can't just walk out there and take this thing down immediately, because, number one, you've got to hire a monument company, uh, you've got to know what it's gonna cost, you've got to go, if it goes to the museum, they've got to be prepared to have a place to put it, they've got to do some stuff to arrange for it. Same thing with the cemetery. You can't just take it down and, and stick it up there.
Well, right, but at least if there was having, I mean, here's, here's the heartburn, Bob. The heartburn is gonna be, is that out of this meeting tonight, there needs to be a decision of whether it stays or whether it goes. Now, I would like that if it, if it's gotta go, that I would like to, that compromise, that's just me, I would like the compromise of, of the cemetery. That's, that's, but right now, it needs to be, is, is there gonna be an amendment to what we have on the table to decide where it should go now, or is it just, or you just want to leave it to take it down? Stacy?
Can, can I ask staff, um, if we don't decide tonight where the final resting place of the memorial would be, how, could you, could you conceive of a timeframe, a short timeframe to get back, to, to come to a good decision? Maybe there are several, I mean, we've talked about two ideas, uh, maybe there are others, I, I don't know. Um, but could, could we say, you know, within a month, or two weeks, or whatever it is, could, could those groups discuss and get this figured out?
I, I don't know, and I will let Molly speak to, I don't know if, if there's been any working of that, those details, because it is a huge monument, and, and, even, even at Lormer, with all the room there is, where it would be, what contextually makes sense, and just physically getting it into the, into the cemetery is a huge challenge. Um, I assume the museum would have similarly huge challenges for that. Um, I, so, so to be able to tell you, yes, it can go in one of those places, I, I don't know that we can say that tonight. Molly?
Mr. Meyer, if you don't mind, in the, uh, in the resolution itself, it talks about the immediate removal of the monument from Ivor Square to storage until such time as a permanent home can be found for the monument. And then it has the provisos about not being public property or public funds. So it does envision the removal and a decision process as to where the final property is in the passage of it with this language.
But with that language, though, the concern would be, is that you take it down and nobody, I mean.
Nobody wants it.
Nobody wants it, and we can't even, we adopt this resolution, and we can't spend one dime on it. Like, theoretically, how are we gonna pay to get it moved?
I only wanted to clarify.
I, no, I know, I'm just.
Well, and that's the sticking point, because then you're moving it twice, because you're moving it in storage and then moving it to another place. So like, we've got to make sure that, that the resolution, it, it, you know, we've, we've got to make sure that if we amend the resolution, that it actually is an amendment that, that, that is able to get this to a place, hopefully a heritage museum where it would.
Our, our alternative would be to not accept the recommendation and come up with our own recommendation to, at least, that's why I said, let's staff research where the proper place is gonna be to move it. I hate to pay for moving it twice, or three times.
Do we know what that cost at all is?
Molly, have you?
We have not received any estimates to, to remove the monument at this point in time, nor have we had any conversations with the River Heritage Museum or other, and other entities until we knew what our parameters were. Um, and again, the public funding, public property provision in the HPC's recommendation does significantly limit, um, our options. So my suggestion would be, if, if the decision is to remove it, would be to remove that provision so that we can bring a variety of options forward to consideration. That might include, it might include private property, but it might also include entities that are either on public property or receive, um, public funding. Even a lot of private museums receive public money in the form of, of grants. So we need to be very specific about if that provision is included, what does that mean? What's the extent of that?
Yeah. Mark, did you have a statement that you wanted to?
Well, just having been, being on the Preservation Commission, I will say, I think the initial concern was more if it was gonna be on city property, where the election is, Dr. Hoffman, who was at the commission meeting, um, pointed out about southeast and, and saying public property rather than city property. I think if there was a consensus to want to move it to the River Campus, I think the Historic Preservation Commission would be receptive to that. I, the one thing we said was that wherever it is moved, it should have some signage to contextualize everything. Um, so I, I think the, the thing about not being on southeast property was something that kind of came up at the end, as I recall, and Molly may have a different view, um, was something that Dr. Hoffman had mentioned. I think that the, the big thing was, commission didn't really want to move it to the citi, to the cemetery. We thought it needed to be at the museum. Um, and so, uh, but obviously, we didn't have great access. So I, I think the commission is receptive to that possibility. Dan mentioned, so I don't, I don't think the commission's totally opposed to moving it to the River Campus. I think that thing kind of came up at the end, but I think where our focus was, not to have it on Cape Girardeau City property.
It appears to me that if we move it.
Oh, sorry. If we move it back to where it came from, it hasn't, it's not happening at all. I mean, crossing the bridge, you see it. Going back over the bridge, you see it, and you know that it used to be in, over here on a lormer. So it ain't really helping the, the, the population here in Cape Girardeau, Missouri. What I think we are missing is, is that we, we want to keep this as a lover, but yet we can't love it, because you, it's too much pain, uh, invested in this thing. So going to the cemetery, they don't want that neither, so the best thing I think we should do, maybe investigate some of these, uh, other cities that may not have the same issue, may not have the same issues that we're having right now. And that is, we trying to keep peace in this community. We already, uh, tight, you know? So I think that putting that over there by the bridge and saying, you know, yeah, when you get ready, when you get ready to cross this bridge, you coming over into Confederate land. I don't think that's a wise move. We trying to bring unity and not destroy Cape Girardeau, Missouri, you know? And I know you all, maybe a lot of people don't see it like that, but that's how I see it, you know? So I don't think that we should, I think we should take time, not take time because they said, get rid of it, but I think we should put it in somewhere until we can find out where it can go, and it'll save a lot of, uh, pain. That's my, that's my opinion. And I know some of us sitting here loves the statue, but there's also some of us sitting here that don't. So, yeah, you split right there, so. And if you go on CMO's land, I mean, with all the different nationality of people, they ain't gonna like that. The people ain't, I don't know about CMO, but the people ain't. It doesn't re, uh, register anything. It has no, it has nothing, as far as I'm concerned, that says this is something that we need to love, 'cause it ain't.
Well, with, with the last statement in that resolution from the HPC, we can move it to the museum, we can't move it to the cemetery, you just have to put it in storage. If you decide, you decide to put it somewhere, then you got to move it twice.
Technically, we couldn't even take it to the docks. Technically, we couldn't do anything, because we've got to use money to move it. Yeah.
Well, we have to, will the council need to approve? Well, we have to, will the council need to approve funding to move this? No, okay.
Hey, this is going to sound real cheap. Can we box it up right now, like they did with the Iver statue, and just, you know, box it up with, during all of this construction? So then, we would be able to figure out where we can go with this?
It's hard to box up. It weighs twelve and a half ton.
What was that?
I think the language in the resolution.
Hold on, Eric.
I think the language in the resolution would support that again. It says the immediate removal to storage, until such time as a permanent home can be found. And then it says the new home would not be on public property or supported by public funding. So I don't think the fact that you'd use money to move it somewhere is a support of it. So I think you've got the leeway that you want by adopting the resolution as it is.
The last clause would preclude us from putting it even in the museum.
Sure.
Well, I move that we strike then the last part of that, of the statement.
And you want to put it in the museum?
No, I, however it's read, I'm sorry, I should have written it down, but.
With a period after contextualized?
You're going to, I'm sorry, Eric.
Okay, I'll read it without that last phrase. Recommend the immediate removal of the Confederate States of America monument from Iver Square to storage until such time as a permanent home can be found for that monument, including covenants to ensure that it is appropriately contextualized, period.
Yes. And then the, after that says what?
After that said, and that the new home should not be on public property or supported by public funding, that is what you've moved.
I would move to strike that from.
Do you want to make an amendment? Without resolution?
Yep.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have an amendment and a second. Any further discussion on the amendment?
I have a question.
You can't ask a question. Any further discussion on the amendment?
So this is, you know, it's adopting everything that the Historic Preservation Commission mentioned, except for the, we would strike out the public property and public funds.
Robert told you we're just considering, we're just considering the striking of that. The rest isn't a penalty. It keeps the options open for the future, to have more options, for it to go somewhere.
We have a second. We've had discussion. All those in favor of the amendment say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Now we have the resolution. Any further discussion on the resolution? The amended resolution?
Just to be clear, I am suggesting this because it sounds like there may even be things that haven't been discussed tonight as possible ideas, or hypothetical situations that we haven't, we're not aware of yet, that we're trying to not, trying to avoid, or trying to keep doors open, options open. So that, I'm not, I don't have any clear goal in mind when I'm proposing this. Other than, we're taking it down, and we're going to do something with it in the future.
Nothing, I was just going to say that I understand. I wish we had a, I wish we had a clear-cut way somewhere to put this. That's where I have heartburn with this. I wish we had somewhere right now that we knew where it to go. I think we've drawn this out. I understand, but I'd rather, you know, I'm still a fatal learner. We'll go from there.
Okay. All those in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye?
I didn't understand, you saying with Robert?
No, 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 no. I just made it, I was just a discussion topic, that's it. I didn't amend, I couldn't.
I thought everybody had talked.
We're done.
Okay. So all those in favor of the resolution?
You had a first.
Say aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, the motion carries.
Now, ma'am?
I was just.
Now she, you can ask questions?
Well, I, we were in the midst of a discussion, I didn't want to be interrupted, so if you have something to say, I'll hear what you have to say.
I would just ask Ms. Kinder if she would consider, and I don't know, maybe moot now, but that there be something added to the resolution that say something about, it says something about it being contextualized.
That was already.
In a museum or similar institution.
That was in the resolution.
That is, that isn't what we just passed. It doesn't say, but it just said contextualized. It didn't say, I mean, clearly the discussion implied that, but what you actually passed didn't say that. So, if you, huh?
Did say that.
Eric, did say that.
Whereas on January 23rd, 2020, the Historic Preservation Commission held a special meeting in progress unanimously to recommend the immediate approval of the Confederate States of America monument, provided resiware. To storage until such time as a permanent home can be found for the monument, including covenants to ensure that it is appropriately contextualized, period. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council.
Okay, so it doesn't say, I mean, it could be contextualized sitting outside someplace, right? And I don't think that that would satisfy any of the people that were in here.
The intent here is to have that contextualization with consult, with the Historic Preservation Commission, with the community, with the public foundation.
But you're talking about it being in a museum, and if you're, if that's the intent, that should be in the resolution.
Unfortunately, this isn't done yet, because we've got to actually come to a decision at some point about where it goes. So there will be ongoing discussion. The only thing that we've done is we've accepted the Historic Preservation's recommendation with a caveat that public funds or places could be used.
That's where my question comes in.
Mark.
Why? How? I had, so how is that any different from being where it is now, moving it to somewhere else with, on public property, being cared for with public money?
Because a lot of people said they would like to see it in a museum. The museum here is public property. We can't even consider that museum because of that caveat.
Exactly, so that museum never, it never came out of, most of the people didn't hear it mouth.
No, but it did come out of, it's come out of a lot of people's mouths that weren't here.
Who were not for the monument in the first place. So that was on the Historic Preservation Committee's original recommendation for specific reasons.
I'll let Mark speak to that, because he's on the commission.
We did not feel that it should be destroyed, and we felt it should be in a museum. And the purpose of the phrase about contextualizing was, it came up, if some, for example, a private museum wanted to put it in their museum, we would want to have signage that explains, you know, slavery and all of that, that, you know, that not, that they couldn't say, put it in the museum to glorify slavery or something like that. So that's why, you know, to have, to have contextualize it and stuff, so that there would have to be some signage with it, that it wouldn't just be put in a building and...
With no explanation?
No explanation, right. That was the purpose behind that.
Thank you, Mark. New ordinances. Bill number 2099, an ordinance amending Chapter 30 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri by changing the zoning of property located at 920 North Middle Street in the City and County of Cape Girardeau, Missouri from R2 to RUMD. Looking by Dan, do I hear a second?
Second. Don't worry about it.
Did I hear a second?
Yes, second.
Okay. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 20-100, ordinance amending Chapter 30 of the Code of Ordinances in the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri by changing the zoning of property located at 900 South Kings Highway in the City and County of Cape Girardeau, Missouri from M2 to M1. Motion by Dan?
Second.
Second by Nate. Any discussion?
Mayor, please mark my vote as abstention due to financial conflict of interest.
That's done. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Bill number 20-101, ordinance amending Chapter 30 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri by changing the zoning of property located on the north side of LaSalle Avenue, east of Baldwin Drive, in the City and County of Cape Girardeau, Missouri from C2 to R1. Motion by Stacy, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Shannon. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Bill number 20-102, ordinance amending Chapter 26 of the Code of Ordinances in the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri regarding speed limits and penalties.
So moved.
Motion by Robbie?
Second.
Second by Dan. Any discussion?
I hope I don't have to say it.
Don't get caught.
You say don't get caught.
I know how to drive. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Bill number 20-103, ordinance accepting a permanent utility easement from Liberty Apartments of Cape LLC for property located at 1145 Walnut Street in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri.
So moved.
Motion by Robbie, seconded by Dan. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Bill number 20-104, an ordinance to repeal ordinance number 5076 regarding a permanent utility and sewer easement for unimproved Decatur Street right of way in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri.
Second.
Motion by Dan and seconded by Robbie. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Bill number 20-107, an ordinance amending Schedule G of Section 26-249 and Schedule R of Section 26-248 of the City Code by establishing 30-minute parking along Broadway Street in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri.
So moved.
Motion by Nate?
Second.
Second by Shannon. Any discussion?
I just wanted to thank the city staff and Scott for taking this into consideration. This is a great example of our downtown businesses having success, and due to that success, running into some unique situations, and we're trying to meet them. I have no doubt this is a moving target, because as more businesses that we hope move in, down there and continue to have success, we're going to run into issues. And this, you know, this is one way that we hopefully can counteract an issue they came up with, but.
Yep, absolutely.
All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. At this time, I'll adjourn, I don't think we have any appointments, we have no other business that I'm aware of. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn to closed session to discuss issues listed in revised section of Missouri, Section 610021, including about limited to legal actions and litigation, confidential communications with legal counsel, and property transactions.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, we adjourn.